Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for December 7, 2020, and call upon Councilmember David Jones for the first item.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you will all join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Kristin Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
We have updated our Zoom capabilities tonight, and it's beginning to look a little bit like a tennis match. So this is going to be interesting to see how this works. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of November 16, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We have no recognitions tonight or presentations tonight. Kristin Rush, do we have anybody signed up for public comment tonight?
We do not.
We will not be having public comment. Then, at this time, we have some items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Brightview Landscape Services for citywide mowing maintenance services in amount not to exceed approximately $173,000. Next is a resolution authorizing a change order to an agreement between the city of Arvada and Diamond Contracting Corporation in the amount of $432,000 for the 2020 water main replacement project. Next item is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $200,000 to statewide Internet Portal Authority for the purchase of Google and Vertura product licenses. Next is a resolution authorizing a notice of termination for Arvada's participation in the West Metro Drug Task Force. Next is a resolution authorizing a construction contract agreement between Arvada and WL Contractors in an amount not to exceed approximately $326,000 for the Arvada Traffic Signal Interconnect. Next is a resolution authorizing a change order number four, the first renewed and amended agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Triple M Construction for the 2019 and 2020 concrete replacement projects in an amount not to exceed $410,000. Next is a resolution approving and ratifying the city of Arvada Deferred Compensation Plan. And the final item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing the dedication of a fire access easement to the Arvada Fire Protection District over and across Arvada's parks and fleet building property located at 7800 West 62th Avenue. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolutions R-20-108 through R-20-120 be approved.
motions for approval. Mr. Marriott, if you'll vote again. Thank you. Ms. Ford, how do you vote on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Displaying the votes, the remaining six council members all vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. We have five items on resolutions. Mr. Devon, the first is Resolution 2115, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and Sibel Metropolitan District.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we're asking you to do tonight is approve a resolution that in effect creates one metro district out of what was formerly two. The original service plan included a number of significant obligations, including but not limited to the funding of regional improvements located near West 52nd Avenue and Ward Road in the amount of about $1.174, almost $1.75 million. And this IGA expands that area where those funds can be spent, which includes Ridge Road and the intersection of West 58th Avenue. These are projects that we're working on with the city of Wheat Ridge because as they are, as we are establishing some residential growth in that area, Wheat Ridge is as well. And so we're coordinating our planning of transportation infrastructure improvements by, you know, through this, and this IGA is the mechanism that we're using to fund these improvements through regional improvements that would be funded by this metropolitan district. So we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Very good. I'll open it up for City Council question or action. Mr. Marriott, you're led first.
Yeah, I'll start by making a motion. I move that Resolution R-20-115, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada, Colorado, and Sibel Metropolitan District be approved.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I actually had a question, so am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Now there's a motion on the table. Okay. So this is, this is the metro district over on Ridge Road, and I can't think of the crossroads, the 60 acres up there, as well as Sabel's down on Ward and 55th, 56th, 57th? Okay, and they're combining them into one metro district? And they don't have to be contiguous to be a metro district?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, no other questions. Motion on the floor. Ms. Ford, how do you vote on the motion?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Remaining council has all voted yes as well. That passes unanimously. Next, I'll move to Resolution 20-116, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement CARES Act Local Government Distributions between Jefferson County and the city of Arvada. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The IGA that you approved with Jefferson County back on June the 3rd, we're asking for an amendment. This amendment is based on the fact that there have been changes in the guidance, the rules, the regulations, if you will, of how to allocate and spend the CARES Act funds. Our finance director, Brian Archer, has been part of ongoing discussions with Jefferson County and also with the other finance directors from the municipalities within Jefferson County that have been recipients of CARES Act funds. And as these, as the guidance and other direction have changed, this information or these changes have been captured in the proposed amendment to the intergovernmental agreement that they would like all the municipalities to approve, and we're recommending approval of this resolution so we could carry on with the work of expending the CARES Act funds for our community.
Okay, I'll open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'll make a motion if there's not any questions.
There are no other lights lit.
All right, I move that Resolution 20-116, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement CARES Act Local Government Distribution between Jefferson County and the city of Arvada be approved.
motions for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes, on this one.
Thank you. And the remaining six council members have voted yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Next, we have R-2117, a resolution authorizes an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District for the fiscal year 2021 Programs and Services in Old Town Arvada. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the resolution that we do every year that enables the city to provide a level of funding to the bid and also for the, authorizes the city to continue the basic level of services that we provide to the bid, which we call the base level of services. The, we have provided in an attachment a summary of the base services. The city funds will be used by the bid to support public programs and services, including the enhanced maintenance, public safety, and event support. And then we have the city services that are defined in the baseline agreement, which include, for example, the landscape services that we provide in Old Town, the planners, and all those kinds of things that we keep up within this very important district of ours. As in previous years, we'll continue to work with the bid board to address opportunities, concerns, and issues associated with Old Town and to support their effective governance. And we also have, I think, waiting on this call, if there's any questions, the bid executive director, Joe Hinksler, and we also have a member of the board, Debbie Pearson, if anyone has any questions that they would like to ask representatives of the bid. We are recommending approval of this resolution.
Mr. Marriott.
So I'd like to make a motion on this unless there are questions by anyone.
I just have one question, Mr. Marriott. Mr. Devon, I just wanted to know when, what year was it that the bid started in terms of the 10-year term? What's the beginning year?
Beginning year of the 10-year term of the agreement, or?
Yes.
Well, I believe that was the first year the bid was formed, which would be, I believe, 2014.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R-20-117, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2021 Programs and Services in Old Town Arvada be approved. And I'd like to just make a quick comment, and that is, I think the bid has faced enormous obstacles this year with the times we're in, and have really done a terrific job of it, really come together, pulled hard, and are doing absolutely everything they can for the businesses down in Old Town. Things like helping cooperate and coordinate the street closures in Old Town, as well as some shelters and heaters for dining, enhanced patios, all kinds of things that they can do to try to make the businesses better. And I just want to compliment them on this last year of incredible hard work and getting things done. And I'm glad that they're in place because the next year will present many, many more challenges, some similar.
I'll certainly echo Mr. Marriott's words with regard to the bid. And it's, it's great to see that these business owners and tenants down there have really stepped up, done a great job during the pandemic, but that they, they get to self-govern to some extent and self-fund as to much of the work they're doing down there, obviously with assistance from the city and from other funding sources. Ms. Ford, how do you vote on this matter?
I vote yes.
And then displaying the remaining votes, this passes unanimously. Thank you to our folks from the bid who are on the call. Sorry we didn't have any tough questions for you to answer, but thank you for your great work. Next, we have R-2118, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District doing business as Mile High Flood District regarding final design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Little Dry Creek, which is the AGCO Tributary C at Lake Arbor. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This IGA will help the city fund planned improvements to Lake Arbor. That will improve the lake's storage volume and get it back to its original construction volume and stabilize the banks that have eroded by wave action and storm runoff. In working, we've done projects like this in the past with Mile High Flood Control District. They've all been very well executed. There are terms and conditions that are defined, and the IGA are consistent with other projects that we've successfully completed. And of course, this, this will help us to complete the improvements at Lake Arbor, which include the volume-related restoring the lake to the volume that it's been in the past, and also restoring those banks, which have, which have eroded significantly. If you've ever seen that area, those banks are pretty well eroded. So this is a project that would contribute to that by dealing with the tributary that goes into Lake Arbor, and we're recommending approval of this agreement and resolution.
Ms. Ford, as this is in your district, would you like to make, reserve the motion?
I would love to, Mayor. Thank you.
You bet. Are there any questions on this? Seeing none, Ms. Ford, you may make the motion.
Thank you. I move that R-20-118, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District doing business as Mile High Flood District regarding final design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Little Dry Creek, A B C O Tributary at Tributary C at Lake Arbor be approved.
Mr. Marriott, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I do. Thank you. I just wanted to make another quick comment here. The Mile High Flood District is funded by all of us through a small increment of our property tax within the region. Stormwater and floods particularly, of course, don't respect any one jurisdiction's boundary. And so it only made sense for the region to get together to deal with these issues. This is a terrific deal for the city because the city is paying for half and the region is paying for the other half. And it's a great benefit to Arvada. It's also a great benefit to other places in the region when they're in the same seat that we are. But Mile High Flood District operates very much in the background. You don't hear much about them ever, but they're a great example of cooperation that we all try to do around here. And so I want to make sure that that's recognized with this action.
Very good. Ms. Ford, how do you vote on your motion?
Yes.
I think I have one time Marriott voted against his own motion, so I always have to ask. Displaying the rest of the votes, this now passes unanimously. Thank you. Finally, we have R-2119, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District doing business as Mile High Flood District Jefferson County and the city of Arvada regarding funding of major drainage way planning and flood hazard area delineation for Van Bibber Creek. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and capitalizing on Councilmember Marriott's comments regarding regionalism, this is a good example of that. We are, we have been working with the Mile High Flood Control District on a project involving Van Bibber Creek. And in that same region, Jefferson County asked to be included as part of the scope of the study to include Ramstetter Creek in order to utilize and take advantage of the fact that there would be consulting and study resources being spent on drainage in this particular area. Arvada will not be contributing any additional funding for this expanded scope of work. It'll, it'll be something that will be determined between Jefferson County and the Mile High Flood District. However, they needed us to agree to amend this agreement, to change the additional scope, to allow for the additional scope of work. It will not benefit us, but it's being a good neighbor and a good partner. And so we are recommending approval of the amendment and the resolution.
Good. Open it up for questions or action. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R-20-119, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District doing business as the Mile High Flood District Jefferson County and the city of Arvada regarding funding of major drainage way planning and flood hazard area delineation for Van Bibber Creek. Project number 107512 be approved.
motions for approval. Ms. Ford, how do you vote on this matter?
I vote yes.
Very good. Displaying the remaining votes, this again passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Miller, do you want to take us through first readings?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm very excited to read these ordinances this evening because this camera is going to finally show that Councilmembers Jones, Simpson, and I are in fact present in this room tonight. So, I move that Council Bill 20-031, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2020, and Council Bill 20-032, an ordinance adopting the floodplain map dated November 20, 2020, as the official floodplain map of the city of Arvada, superseding that dated November 15, 2019, and further adopting the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps, FIRM, prepared by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and Council Bill 20-033, an ordinance amending and adding certain sections of Chapter 70 Personnel Rules of the city of Arvada, or the Arvada City Code, all be approved on first reading ordered published in full and public hearing set for January the 4th in the year 2021.
Let me turn my mic back on now so that I can be part of the discussion as well. Are there any, we've got the motion. Those in favor of the motion respond by voting. Ms. Ford, how do you vote on the first reading?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Displaying the remaining, displaying the remaining votes, this passes unanimously. We now move into public hearing scheduled at 6:15, which was a conditional use permit for Old Town residences generally located at 7267 West 56th Avenue. Ms. Morris, are you going to take this item? Or Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the applicant is here with a request that he would like you to consider. So if you could call on Mr. Moser as the applicant, he'll present his request.
Very good. Mr. Moser. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Bill Moser, Senior Managing Director of Trammell Crow Company, and the applicant for the Old Town Residence Conditional Use Permit that was to be before you tonight. While very disappointing, I am requesting a continuance of the hearing on this application until your meeting on January 4, 2021. The notices to the public that were provided may have left some question about whether persons wanting to testify had to appear virtually or also had the opportunity to appear before you in person. We want to make sure that everyone has a full opportunity to testify either virtually or in person if the council continues its hybrid meeting policy into January. So we're asking that you continue the hearing so that we can make sure that all of the notices provided to the public more fully and accurately identify the opportunities for providing public comment on our conditional use permit request.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, I just wanted to make one, one quick comment.
You bet.
Thank you. The, what we'd like to do is let you know that we believe our, the notice was technically sufficient. And from that standpoint, we just wanted to also make that on the record. The city team, however, does not object to the continuance as Mr. Moser's presented. The, this was largely a procedural issue kind of associated with the rapidly changing circumstances around the pandemic in late November. That created some confusion regarding the, the status of the meeting. And as a result, we would be supportive of Mr. Moser's request.
Okay. And Mr. Moser, to be clear, you were prepared to move forward this evening but for this issue over the notice and in an abundance of caution. And I understand why you want to be so cautious based upon the history of this project. That's why you're requesting a continuance at this time?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
I would much prefer to do this tonight and move forward.
I, I certainly understand and respect that, but also understand and respect why you're requesting a continuance. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that conditional use permit for Old Town residences generally located at 7267 West 56th Avenue be continued until January 4, 2021.
motions to continue. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. And displaying the remaining votes, that passes unanimously. Mr. Moser, we apologize for the confusion over the notice, and we look forward to seeing your presentation on January 4 and hearing citizen comments at that time as well. I've been assured that the notice that will be going out will make it clear that all options are going to be open to, to residents in terms of participating. I would indicate that we don't know what's going to happen between now and January 4 in terms of what mandates may come down from the Health Department as to whether or not we can meet in chambers or not at that time. This is a constantly changing environment, and so I just want to make sure that all options are very clear to citizens so that this can move forward and finally be resolved one way or the other.
Of course, Your Honor. What, what I believe is the plan from Trammell Crow and in discussions with the city and the planning department is that we will phrase the notice to encourage individuals who would like to participate to check the city's website prior to the meeting to confirm what options might be available for their participation because, as you pointed out rightfully so, we might be under a public health order that changes the available methods of participation. So we're just clarifying that a little bit just to make sure that everybody understands where to go to understand those options.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moser, we'll see you then.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I really appreciate your consideration, and the staff has been very cooperative. And I know we're all frustrated by this, but it's the right thing to do. So thank you very much.
Fair enough. That, I'll close for, at this time, the public hearing on this matter, and we'll reconvene on January 4 as it pertains to this subject. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anybody signed up at this time?
We don't, but I think we also have a ratification on there.
Yes, that's going to come under reports from the City Council.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Why don't we do that one first? Ratification of Arvada Economic Development Association, AIDA, board members? Mr. Marriott, do you want to do that since you're the council rep to that?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I don't have that in my... Someone else has it.
I have it.
Wants to proceed that.
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer, if you... Oh, Mr. I'm sorry, the voices are just bouncing off the walls, and I bounce off the walls all the time, so. Yeah. Mr. Jones.
Happy to make that motion.
Very good. Now keep the light on that side, the camera on that side of the room.
Especially as long as it's on the two beautiful women beside me. I move that the nominations of Ms. Salvetti, and I apologize if I don't say these names correctly, Mr. Feldman, Mr. Gregory, Mr. Free, and Mrs. Hickson to the AIDA Board of Directors be approved and ratified.
motions for approval and ratification. Ms. Ford, how do you vote?
I vote yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Displaying the remaining votes, this now passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll go to City Council reports. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate the life of Lisa Akayama. Our friend Lisa died on Wednesday of COVID. She was vibrant and full of life and passionate, and her and her husband Brad Rupert have been very involved in our community for a number of years. And she will be missed. This shocked our community and devastated a lot of people. So just wanted to say we, we will miss her, and, and we loved her.
It was a beautiful celebration of life that we, we had this afternoon. Mr. Rupert did an excellent job of setting that up. Some very heartfelt comments from coworkers and learned, even those of us who knew Lisa well, learned a lot about Lisa as part of this today. So it's very touching, and it brings this even closer to home. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Following upon that, I think it's so important to continue to recognize those first responders that are there, who are the people who are helping us, who are responding to these crises and so many more. It's just an incredible year that we've all been through together. And so as part of that, working with the Chamber of Commerce, we've been doing Chow for Champions Holiday Edition for those first responders who are working on Thanksgiving and Christmas days. We had a very successful Thanksgiving, but we are still fundraising for Christmas Day so that we can continue that meal delivery for those who are away from their families while hopefully we are able to enjoy ours. So if anybody is interested in donating to that, no matter how much anything is appreciated, please go to the Arvada Chamber's website or just Google Chow for Champions Holiday Edition. You'll be able to find it and go through them. And I was teasing the mayor earlier today that I'll expect him in comings shortly.
My arm has been twisted, and my credit card will be debited.
Thank you very much. But yes, and just once again, issuing all of our gratitude and thanks to everyone who's out there risking, whether it's the pandemic or anything else, just to help keep our community safe and functioning. Thank you.
On that same note, in terms of charitable giving, for those of you watching live tonight, remember that tomorrow is Colorado Gives Day, a great opportunity to support local and regional nonprofit organizations. regional nonprofit organizations, and you can certainly do it year-round, but this is a great opportunity that the Community First Foundation, which is located right here in Arvada, spearheads, and so please be generous with the nonprofits that, that you care about and that work so diligently. Mr. Pfeiffer?
That being said, I want to thank you for the tree lighting. You did an excellent job the other night, and we unfortunately cannot all be with you. And, and for those who joined live, it was a great event. You did a great job, like usual, and I believe it's airing right after this, if I remember correctly, too. You're going to re-air it on Channel 8 or streaming right now, so it was one, I felt like I didn't want to miss it, but I was there remotely.
Yes. Yeah, it's tough. It's, it's tough not being able to all be together, and, but thank you for that, Mr. Pfeiffer. And yeah, check in, you'll see a really funny-looking guy in a red sequin suit and a really fun elf, so. That would be Wendy Brockman was the elf that was, and Debbie Pearson was another elf. So with that, Mr. Devon? Get this crowd back under control. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Ford, I apologize. Yes.
No, not a problem. I just wanted to encourage everyone to continue shopping Arvada. Small businesses really need us this season, and also I decided to take another venture at the online fine art market at the Arvada Center, and that goes till December 18th, and they need you as well, so I just appreciate what everyone is doing.
Thank you for that, Ms. Ford. Mr. Devon? Sit back down in your seat.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next Monday, we will have a workshop on our utility master planning. Very important workshop to discuss some projects and other issues that are associated with our utilities infrastructure, and we look forward to the discussion with, with all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Yes, Ms. Gillis?
The tree lighting airs on December 14th.
December 14th?
Correct.
Okay, next week. Very good. Stay tuned. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.